All right, we're meeting today at 5:45. This is a general assistance hearing. That we have to have every year on the ordinances, whether we create our own ordinance, which I don't think anybody here wants to tackle, or whether we accept the ordinance from from the state. And so I'll open it up to you all, because this is a public hearing. Does anybody have any comments about the general assistance? Ordinance? No? I will tell you, I looked, I found it interesting. I looked at last year's, not that any of you care, but looked at last year's maximum versus this year's, and it changes by county. Based on what I average.
Meaning maximum.
Amount that people get for different things.
Right.
So let me see if I have my notes here. So. For example, somebody comes in and they want support. They have an emergency because of the voluntary emergency situations, then we can give an overall maximum depending on the type, number of people in the household and who needs help. Sometimes it's not everybody in the family that needs or in that household that needs help. But anyways, I found it interesting that the overall maximum, maximums for 2024 was, for one person was 1,037. This year it's 1,190, which is a little bit of a jump. The food maximums, and we all know that that food is going out of the out of the roof up. Went up $6 this year. So last year, for one person, monthly food allowance was $292. This year, this year, it's $298. So it went up $6. I don't think that's going to hold very long. That's the new maximum for general assistance.
They're probably going to get cheese doughnuts.
Yeah, yeah. For the electric, for the mileage, the that did not go up at all. It did not change. So really, the only thing that changed was $100 to $150 depending for the overall maximum, and then the food went up $6. But this is the only change from last year. And then there were a few changes from to definitions and describing certain things. So since you're new here and we're talking, we're having a hearing at this present moment, do you have anything you want to say about the general assistance ordinance before we approve it?
I don't necessarily have anything to add about the general assistance ordinance. I think that $6 is going to prove to be too low. We have 175,000 raiders are going to lose their nap better than 206.
Yep.
And if we take that into consideration, how many of those?
And went it up $6 from last year.
Right, up $6. And probably we're going to see people whose
Yes.
Essentially, they're supplemental.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, in the past, not last year, but the year before, we had two, two people that we served. I'm nervous that we're going to see a lot more this year, but.
Thank you.
Especially when it comes to your finances.
I'm going to mute you guys.
We don't reconvene until January and I'm assuming I don't know, there should be something being here.
Yeah, I know when I was reading, you know, reading up on this, again, we can as a town make our own amounts and we just have to justify them. And I think for right now, we just go with what the state has said, unless somebody has some clear argument against it. So. If, do I have I'm assuming that we'll have to wait till six to close the hearing?
There's no time limit. I figured we'd go till six. But I don't know. We could just let people filter in. Everybody who comes in, what they think about G A.
All right, because we are, we are in a meeting right now. We are in a hearing. And it is scheduled for 5:45. So anybody that has any feedback on, on the general assistance information. Your spot's taken, Jim. You didn't come in early enough.
No, I've been on a mission there. Almost drove off the south end of the island. Right on another 20 feet.
Wow. Oh, based on the phone call that I got this morning?
Nancy?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I was going to take a run down there. And then when she said it was all fine, it's like.
She called me again and I said, be there in five minutes. She said, five minutes? I was going by West Shore.
So Jim, we're having a hearing right now on the general assistance ordinance that has to be done every year. So we're going to give it a few more minutes. And then if there are no no other comments, then we can either approve it or not, based on what the board chooses to do. So we'll give just a few more minutes. Thank you for coming today.
You're very welcome. Have you guys on, Chief Bernard is on, but they haven't said anything? Want to ask?
Yes.
Does anybody on Zoom have any opinions on our general assistance ordinance? We're having a short hearing right now. We do this once a year to adopt amendments that the state recommends. So do you have any thoughts on them? You're welcome. Just unmute yourself.
We may have some improvements of the agenda for Detroit tonight. Yeah, one left. Yeah.
I've seen it.
We'll wait for more minutes. I didn't realize that there's a proper. Is it purpose of that call?
Oh, no. It's a different pros goal.
Oh, okay. The copper from here.
Very nice.
Just for those of you coming in, we're having a hearing right now on the general assistance ordinance that we need to do every year. Either approve the one that's, that the state has provided us, or we can adapt our own. So we're taking any feedback anybody might have.
Oh.
Anybody back there want to?
I have.
You got it?
All right, anybody have any comments on the hearing that we're discussing right now? Hearing none, I think we'll put a close to this. Because I suspect all of you are okay with it. Yes, yes. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the 2025 general assistance ordinance that is used by the state. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Wait till six.
We probably shouldn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, please.
Chuck, is it, is this going to keep you recording?
Do you guys want to put a back row? We could put another row up front here.
Set some up if you want. Do you want any more?
Put another row in case other, I think we're probably going to have at least three more.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm not. Okay, actually, that's good to tell everybody.
Do you think we should do, since Holly's here, should we do that first after our warrant? Before?
We could skip that.
Okay, so then we'll do.
Mario? By the way, if they're just all like, hold on. Don't worry about it. She's like.
Tell me your name for the minutes.
Yeah.
George Johnson.
21 log cat.
This would be.
Where's she in attendance? I gave you that also.
I have.
Oh, here it is. Who are we on?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we'll do the warrants for the minutes.
And then she's working on the guys. Yeah.
We're going to do the warrants, have to get those done, and then we'll tell you down to here.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we should probably go. When I go back.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm going to just do the warrants and then. Just to get those done. All right, it's six o'clock and we're going to start our September 22nd, 2025 Blackboard meeting. I'd like to start with just getting over the warrants and then our agenda will be flipped for tonight, just because Holly's here. I figure you might want to go home at some point in time. So I'd like to start with the warrants and then we'll jump to to select board business. So I'd like to move that we approve payroll number 22 for $2,395.23. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I'd like to move that we approve accounts payable number 23 for $5,547.29. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
All right.
I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number 24 for $11,820. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I'd like to move that we accept payroll number 25 for $2,122.16. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And lastly, I'd like to move that we approve accounts payable number 26 for $101,240.66. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And I guess you all know what that is for. That's our school budget, which is
installment to come here.
Yeah, every, every month we have that installment. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from September 8th, select board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Color and finger. And if I can find that. Sign it quickly. And is it in here? I don't see it. We'll sign it later. All right. I'd like to move down to select board business, since I believe that's why many of you are here. And we have invited Holly here as well. And just to give a start brief overview and then the rest of the team can have their input. Basically, Thursday morning, I had gotten some information from someone about an AI, AI data center. I shared that immediately with April. April contacted Evan. And from there, we decided that we better get this on the agenda and see what we can do. And then we got home and looked at the paper. And that's the first that we really knew that something was happening with this data center. What you've seen in the paper is as much as we know. We did send out a letter on Friday. We sent out a letter to quite a few people. We did hear back from Dennis Simmons, manager of Wiscasset, and his only comment was that it was a non-disclosure agreement with, so because what we asked for is all the information that was available, or whatever was happening with these, with this potential data center. That was the only feedback that we have gotten so far. I've seen nothing else. We sent a note to Holly, we sent a note to Cameron Rennie, we sent a note to the select board chair in Wiscasset and a few other people, DEP and, and then Kim, I think you did a little research.
There's been nothing filed with the DEP to this state for that parcel of land for any project. Whether it be housing or AI data centers or anything else, DEP has nothing. It's been put into that.
So and, and with Evan here, Evan, you want to just, because I know this, this showed up in the paper because of your meeting, and even though you're sort of not in charge of that, you were, you are the commissioner, one of the three commissioners. So would you like to give your spiel?
I can definitely talk about that. So I'm Evan Goodkowski. We haven't met on the county commissioner for Westport Island, Wiscasset, Edgum, Booth Bay, Booth Bay Harbor and Southport. We have our meetings at the courthouse, first and third Tuesdays at nine o'clock. So this previous Tuesday, we had Wiscasset on board, and they were on the board because the commissioners had previously allocated $240,000 from ARPA funds toward their affordable housing project that they're going, were going to attempt at their Old Ferry Road development. So the site that we're talking about, I'll give you guys a visual aid, is a 300 acre town parcel in Wiscasset, just so people know, because a lot of people have said this is at the main Yankee site. This is actually the main Yankee site to the south. So town Wiscasset actually owns this lot that comes out to the bridge road, is on Birch Point Road and is on Old Ferry Road. So it's called the Old Ferry Road property. Anyway. Several months have gone by since we were going to cut a check to the town, but it became clear that they were looking at other possibilities for that. So we said, okay, we're going to hold on to ARPA funding for now until we have a better idea of what we're going to use the money on. So they finally came into our meeting and said, hey, we've got another housing project that we'd want to get an extension to look at this. And oh, by the way, we're kicking this down the road. So that's why we're here, because we're looking at a different site. They're talking about doing a data center on Old Ferry Road. So they're like, they're like, cool. If you guys want to do that, that's your business. We don't have a role in that. Go at your own, you know, caution, but that has nothing to do with us. We're trying to decide this grant and where it should go and whether nine guys are going to be able to accomplish what you want to accomplish within the deadlines that we have. So that's about where it ended. We're still looking into what we're going to do for their affordable housing project, which has nothing to do with this now. So now quite a few people have listed online that they should contact me and contact the county commissioners and come to our meeting. And we have no regulatory oversight. We have no role. I have about as much to do with it as the Pope. So I'm really happy to redirect everybody and give everybody a civics lesson to take it to the town Wiscasset and to any other state agency and probably federal agency that would want to hear because it's going to be on the water if it ever happens. But that's the extent of it from our point of view. Now, what else do you want to know from?
I did, I did see that you posted that. Maybe I'm not.
I forwarded quite a few copy and paste emails for the same copy and paste things that people have sent me. So, you know, just about as good as AI, we're all just copying and pasting the same messages to each other. So yeah, as much as I'd like to help and have any input, we haven't, the county commissioners have no role or regulatory purpose in anything to do with this. And I think where some of that gets lost is outside of New England, a county might have a lot more to do with it. But it makes it, our counties don't really have much to do with this type of thing. So that's where I'm at.
So do you have any comments?
Actually, a question. Related, but unrelated, do you have any oversight responsibility for the Public Utility Commission? Do you have any input to them?
Holly, tell them. No, not that I'm aware of.
Not on utility, electricity, telephone, any of that stuff?
No, I can send them letters and complain, just like you can. But yeah.
I thought maybe you had some, because it's more of a colony issue.
No, nothing.
April, did you have anything to add?
No, I think Holly has.
Yeah, question. You mentioned the date for the ARPA funds. If they were to repurpose that in a still built housing in another site, what's that date that?
That's what we're trying to figure out. I believe we have an allocation deadline of December 31st of this year, which we had already allocated. But yeah, whether or not we can send it to a different project with them, or we have to re let every other applicant restart the whole process. That's where we're, or reallocated to the previously approved projects that are on the list.
For housing.
Yeah.
The purpose is housing.
The purpose is housing.
Just clarifying.
Yes, we've had that discussion many times. The purpose was housing, not computer housing, people housing. So there.
Let me, I just want to pause because someone unmuted. Deb, did you have a question?
Oh, yes. First of all, thank you, Evan. I was one of the instigators for.
That's okay. I like a little agitation now on that.
For contacting you, trying to get information, but hold on, I'm zooming here. Anyway, I think you made it quite clear what, you know, what's.
I hope so.
Yeah, what's going forward. I guess my only other question, I, I understand that if anything like this has to go forward, there are going to be a lot of hoops that either of the, you know, Wiscasset or whatever are going to have to jump through to get to that point where it would actually end up with a data center, AI data center. So my question is, then ultimately, does the decision initially rest with Wiscasset?
The, I think that should be the, they would be the originating local government, obviously, and then whatever developer that if they were to move ahead with this, they own, the town owns the land, so they would have to probably be several agreements that would come about that if it can be developed, then they would sell it, obviously. So seems like there's quite a few hurdles and out of my pay grade to tell anybody where to start, unfortunately.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Okay. Well, again, I just wanted to thank you for your, your feedback and I hope you didn't get too bombarded with a bunch of.
Thank you for reaching out. Just, yeah, there's quite a few copy and paste emails in there, but Wiscasset is spelled with one T, not two.
Yeah, did I do that probably?
Oh, no, state of Maine gets that wrong every once in a while.
Jimmy, Jimmy, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, there were two grants in question, or that Wiscasset's been working with, right? There's the AR.
ARPA.
ARPA. And then there's the N E C E.
Yeah, and that's something, but that's something with the state.
Something with the state.
I don't know too much about that.
Okay, that was the next.
Clean Energy Recovery Program or something.
Okay.
Because they have like a, I think the qualifications have like a post-industrial side. So they qualify because they made Yankee to be like, I don't even know what the scope of the program is.
Right. So just the ARPAs for the.
Yeah, that's where we're interested. Yeah, and ARPA is American Rescue Plan Act, which was the COVID funding.
So what's their deadline? This is just.
That's our deadline, then we have to disperse it to them. So that's Department of Treasury federal guidelines that you have to have the money spent and allocated and then we have to deliver it by the end of next year. We have to send it back to the federal government.
Right.
Which no one has any intention of doing.
Right. So do they have to prove that they have, you know, housing plans in order to take advantage of that grant?
Oh, that's pretty much what we're looking for.
Right.
Yeah, because pretty much we've approved four or five other projects.
Which is what we need.
Yeah, we're much closer to shovel ready projects than this one. So this was originally for pre-regulatory and site analysis and looking at the land and what could be done.
Yeah.
Holly, we'd love your feedback.
So let's get back to talking about that. I'm Holly Stover. I'm your state representative. For those of you who have not met, I've met most of you once and many more times than that over, at least now going into eight years. When I learned of it, I learned of it like you did. I contacted the governor's office. Normally, if a $5 billion business was coming to mind, they probably would go there first, which is kind of interesting that that didn't happen because, putting the government off, they didn't know anything about it. They would have no reason to mislead me. I also call D E C D, Department of Economic and Community Development, because just like the governor's office, if you could have created a $5 billion project, you'd likely go to economic and community development to see what other support you could get. Of course, there's DEP. And I believe that also DMR, Rain Resources at some point needs brought into this. And there may be other state agencies as well. I informed Senator Rennie, Senator Rennie, who has two young children, which you're not here tonight, this is bedtime, and Wayne Farron, who actually represents Wiscasset among other towns, and he's aware, and we're all in the ready. You understand the concerns here and their legitimate concerns? It concerns me. You have the right, right? You have the right to work for the town and have NDAs, and you have the right to have private conversations. Because it's kind of a big conversation to have in closed doors with an NDA without informing state government. Because when I went, and I did, I went to knocking on the doors in Augusta, I didn't actually physically go. I was calling, making a lot of panic phone calls. No one knew. They knew the ARPA. But no one knew anything else. So that tells me something else, which is they haven't gone outside the town to look to the town of Wiscasset, just talk to people in Augusta, which you would have to do. It just seems sort of logical to me on many levels for a project at this size. And maybe the PUC, I mean, there's just a lot involved. But I'm happy to be here tonight on behalf of Senator Rennie and Representative Farron. We're going to do whatever we need to do to work with you around this and learn more. Because right now, we know as much as you know. Maybe not even as much.
Holly, it's my understanding that Department of Energy is in for some time and looking for a community to host a wisdom session as to the sentiments of local towns and what they need. It might be, I know that you're aware that one of our residences brought it to your attention and has brought it to the board's attention for, for months now. And it seems like that there's, there's been sort of an ongoing effort to make an outreach to the counties. Has there been any movement on that front?
I can follow up. And not, not that I know I'm speaking at tonight, but I can follow up and see whether or not, separate from the request, if there's been any interest on the part of the Department of Energy. It's like sometimes looking at the county is like the past years, and we would want to move through, but we've never been this much as much as I did.
So is it? As I understand it now, the only parties involved in this discussion are the, are the, you know, the authorities in the town of Wiscasset, Main Yankee and the secret development company.
As I understand it, and I don't know.
Main Yankee isn't involved as far as we know.
And what about the commission that oversees? Well, no, Senator Rennie sits on that and gee, kind of annoying.
It's, it's the town of Wiscasset. That's it. Main Yankee doesn't seem to.
Hard to believe. Main Yankee's not involved, but that's me. Is there a, are you on the regional committee for the, for the new career of our?
Senator Rennie is. And their annual meeting is coming up.
I was just about to say that anybody that's interested, the Main Yankee Community Advisory Panel, meets once annually, maybe next Tuesday, September 30th at 4 p.m. at Monstlight Restaurant upstairs generally, and they have representatives from the company, the feds and the state that discuss all those open legislation. They'll probably be talking about this a little bit.
It's a public meeting?
Yep.
So everyone is welcome at 4 p.m. on Tuesdays.
So maybe you can answer this question, then. It was my understanding that before Main Yankee transferred that property, that the casts that are stored over there with radioactive waste had to be transferred out?
They're not building there. They're.
It's a different property.
That's a good question. Still, I don't know the answer, but it's not the same parcel.
Jason?
I've spent most of my professional life working in large data centers, very large data center. You need bikes or other vehicles to get around inside. You know, there, there's a reason why most of them are in Virginia or Washington State, you know, and some of the New Orleans are in Ohio. But, you know, there's, there's a reason why this is never going to be built in Maine is basically our electric rate is 22 cents a kilowatt hour or commercial power. Virginia is sub 10%, Washington State is sub 10%, Ohio is sub 12%. At 22 cents a kilowatt hour, it's never going to happen. At twenty two cents a kilowatt hour, it's never gonna happen. Then on top of that, you have uh network peering issues. We don't have the network up here to support it. All the peering you'll have is. Basically, two hubs are May East, May West, they've been built out from there. Uh, May, and that's down in Virginia again, because that's where our M C I and everyone else was. That's where all the big data centers are, really, and you go down to Virginia, you go to Washington State. That's where they are. That's where the cheap power is. That's where they're gonna be built. This will never be built. If it is built. It, you know, it's not gonna be built, but if it if it was ever to be built, you're looking at a big building that takes a ton of power. Very few resources in terms of people. Um, you know, your cooling. They can cool it either by just traditional A C methods, they could do cooling towers, or they could do um, you know. Heat exchangers with the river like Maine Yankee. It's 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 not, you know, don't look for that, it's gonna be minimal. You're gonna have probably twenty people during the day for traffic during nine nine five. You're gonna probably have three to six people at night working plus security people. It's gonna be a big huge building, each rack, which are basically nineteen inches wide. Or E six, or you just deep, depending on how big they are, will take more power than each of our houses. There will be more power in that place, people. You know.
I have a question.
Hmm?
These small mods and nuclear reactors. If they get permitted to do that, would that change your view because the cost of power would be substantially less than what you're facing on a ten hour building permitting.
That the non- the non-plant's never also never gonna be built. The cost of electricity is is so much cheaper with natural gas. Or either natural gas on top of that, or solar and uh solar wind with battery backup. It's in, I I don't see nuclear that ever could back there either.
And a great question to Maine Yankee cap meeting.
Yes.
Really better than.
But also, Jeff, I wanna tell you that these might look like the governor's office, so.
You know.
The cost of electricity, they're not gonna be here.
It's not, it's not gonna happen. Then on top of that, we're only other things you're gonna have are, you're gonna have master generators, that you had, where I've been. It was three to five megawatt generators and things scaled up since then. Uh, you you know, you have a bank of a hundred of them. There's gonna be, you know, those will run like once a week for their hour test or half hour test, depending what they go. Um, but again, there's a very few staff, there'll be, you know, the lights are out at night, they might not even have a crew at night, so it depends on how they run.
So.
Isn't that say that I just built one down in Tennessee, and I just thought it was all generator driven?
No, I can't, I can't have one. The price is gonna be crazy, you know, and maybe they do natural gas, but Tennessee, you know, it'll also cheap electricity, so likely going grid.
I think some of the interest in this area is the same reason why Maine Yankee was built here, it's access to cold water, the night bypassing of the traditional ways they've been trying to cool those things, so that's why. And the cold air, the wind nights, I'm very interested.
So it sounds like, based on that, that's one of the seasons.
Obviously, that would be talking the hot about, really.
There's not gonna be two hundred fifty, you know, during construction, you're gonna have. Thousands, and after that, it's just gonna, it's gonna go to nothing for a place.
Thousands of outside crews, and it's not gonna be our local craftsman or carpentry, no. The Maine Yankees decommissioned, so they intend to build another nuclear power plant, we'd have to go to state wide right around the camp.
Yeah, and and as far as the light pollution, the only thing they're gonna have is three lights, another.
Nuclear reactors.
Hang on.
Are offspring, a new technology, you know, we had nuclear reactors on submarines with people. This new technology, I differ, it will be used.
I'm not sure here.
I don't, my question was, he's right about everything except. It's different about power cost, absolutely right, you know, you know, whatever power costs, but the reason they're working on. Low cost nuclear reactors, modular reactors. Is to be able to offset power costs in areas like this. That's all I say. Maybe they never come to fruition, but. I believe they will be, I believe they will be used. They will be used on data centers and other high tech, so they require a low power.
Jason, you hadn't finished talking, so go ahead.
Yeah, I was just saying about the light, I think there was another concern was light pollution. You're gonna just have. You know, standard parking lot lights for the people that are parking, so they have safety to walk to their car. Uh, you probably, you know, I don't see their vision of doing overhead power lines, because again, data centers. All the data centers I worked at had at least two reconnections, and they were a hundred percent buried in part, and and the transformers were fine. Uh, you know, uh walls where you can't shoot. So it was a lot of light of paranoia.
What what about the noise level, Jason?
Again, with the generators running, it's, you can hear them, they're, you know, it's not. The generator is very loud, but when the generators aren't running, you just, you hear a lot of air conditioning, if you're. Uh, not necessarily cooling towers, because cooling towers. You know, are one way to cool it, but depends on what they can do for permitting. A lot of them will just do, you know.
Once through, yeah.
Yeah, it depends on, you know, they could do cooling towers like, you know, like you see on big offices building the pop or like. Hospitals, or they could just do traditional, you're a lot of. Your handlers with A C units, or they can do, they could do a heat exchange with the river eventually. Um, I don't know what they wanna do, what the permits, they get permits for, but. Um, you know, I don't see a lot of people, I don't see a lot of traffic, it's gonna be a pretty low fire load, because. They don't, they won't let decompostable materials on the data center floor. You know, they'll have a small office section, which will be the only real fire load, and they have vesta systems in the floor which do. Basically, air sampling all the time, and they can, uh they go uh. Bi-directional, so like tic-tac-toe, so you can tell where any pre-smoke is before they actually have a fire, and they can cut the power off in that section. They no longer do a headlight or anything, that's for fire.
And your name?
My name is Sam Gordon Brady, and my wife, I just moved out here, but. One of the problems, things that concerns me is that C M P just re-conducted three forty five lines, I worked on a project. And they're operating the substation, it's inside Maine Yankee. They just ran two circuits at four seventy seven out for handling the substation, so they increased their load capacity in there by. Multiples, just for distribution. Which doesn't, isn't really usable, because the load here is so low, so it's not gonna power that place. I know that you need a transmission line, but you could tap off transmission lines. Yeah, that runs through the center of the property, so yes, they have to build a substation, but at five billion dollars, you could build a three forty five yard.
Well, they're definitely gonna do a substation, and they're definitely being, you know, I think that ought to go all underground from there to Maine Yankee.
But they could build it right next door, because they have transmission right away. So it's it's not, it's theoretically very possible for them to tap off the high line and feed that thing on the three forty five.
If they get five billion dollars.
But C M P loves to sell power.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but they did a little quick connect corner, they just brought the transmission line.
Yeah, that money, so they brought it down, it's hydro power, come to hand, and. C M P likes to sell power. It's a, it's a legitimate concern whether or not they do it, they have the power capacity.
Great question for next Tuesday.
Yes.
Other questions? I have a question for you, and that is. How do we move forward to make sure that we are kept in the loop to know what in the world is going on? Because we have been totally in the dark, we found out about us like everybody else in the paper on Thursday. And that's when you found out about it. So how do we, how do we make sure that we uh we get in the loop?
I think the first step is. We thought, there was Simmons, and the town of Wiscasset. I mean, if 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 government didn't know, if state government didn't know. And Wiscasset didn't allegedly, I I, you know, I can't find any evidence that they said, that they contacted state government. Say that. Um, but if they did. I can't imagine no one would be talking about that, moving forward with everything on such a long list. I don't have too many NDAs to get signed with Maine state government, unless they're lawsuit, so. So I, you know, both Senator Rennie and Representative Ferrin and I will stay in touch. And whatever meetings are held, Senator Rennie will be there Tuesday night, I don't know if she'll be there, she will definitely be there. Um, she's, our our state senator has a seat at that table. And Senator, Representative Ferrin and I may be there. We will stay in touch with you and in touch with this, and with touch. Like I said, I named at least four departments, I think should be very concerned, including where you sources.
On Friday, I talked directly to the economic development staffer in the Wiscasset Town Office. Um, who was put in the article.
And then.
Uh, Aaron.
Yeah.
Yes, after I talked to the reporter who wrote, or the journalist who wrote the article. And I had asked him a couple of questions, and one of my questions was, you know, will you need full use of the three hundred acres? Are you thinking? Some of this is going to, you know, serve the ARPA, but are you gonna try to do both? And he said, no, that they have full interest in the full three hundred acres, it's a little less. Um, he also said, I said, okay, well, it's on the water, they have waterfrontage, do they want access to the river? And he responded that they um did not express interest in the river, that they're actually going to use the town's water. Um, and that they were, it would be great for the town because they want to bolster up their infrastructure. Um, and invest in Wiscasset's infrastructure, and that's what Wiscasset needs. Um, so that was one of the benefits for them. So I thought it was funny, you know, you're buying a piece of ed- so I asked, are you going to lease the land, or are you, or do you want to, do they wanna buy it? And they said they wanted to buy it. Um, and he said that this surveyor, um, right now, we're in very early stages, like we've all been told. But it's, they they, the town of Wiscasset was approached. Particularly because they were um seen as a good candidate. And that um they send out these surveyors, and they have been going across Maine to to identify sites that would be suitable. So they're in that study of whether this would be a good um option for them right now.
Did they say how many they're looking at for options?
No.
I know they talked about Melanocat or somewhere, I, when I was doing my research, at Melanocat was one of the sites, and they set that one down.
Yeah, that was back in twenty twenty one, um, and then, you know, I, along with other citizens here, Sam and Brady, we've all been writing letters to. Um, they've written to Dark Sky, and we've written to the D E P, we've let you know, they're on it, and they're gonna. You know, try to get involved as possible, because they're not butter, uh, and you know, their whole mission is kind of anti this. Um, and they have serious investments in that neck, um, that I doubt are some I really wanna align with. So I think the more people know what to attend, the better.
Um, so it occurs to me that we should wanna, I mean, I could say that as representatives, we should reach out to Wabanaki nations. Um, because of the protection of this land that was on ceded native land. Um, ready for protection of that water down there, so they share our interest. It would be a bad, they would have to go to the city and go there, it's the vote development office, the basis. Um, Melanocat made me think, but I was saying, didn't work there, who's.
Who did you speak to in Wiscasset? You said Aaron.
Aaron, yeah, um.
I saw Steve.
For Sostee.
Oh, Aaron.
You also talked to, uh, because I was interested, I saw your your email back to us. Um, you said you had also talked to the journalist, and you said you found out some interesting things with that.
Yeah, um, I just asked, you know, how did you think to write this article? And she said, you know, and and as we know, when we have town meetings, planning board or otherwise. Um, sometimes reporters or journalists kind of just sit in and listen in, and it was, you know, she was just sitting in and listening and.
She just.
There, she just watched the video.
Oh, yeah, okay, well, then she just, yeah. Yeah, so it, there was just, yeah, it was just a listening and then writing the article, so that's all she, she really knew.
I did do some, I I went back and looked at a a few months of um Wiscasset minutes. Um, they have their minutes that are posted online, and they also have. Um, with those minutes, they have a a report from the um manager, and there was no reference whatsoever at all. About um this data center, so um had we not read the paper. Um, I guess we still wouldn't, she listened to, um, still wouldn't know anything about this, so. Um, it, you know, I didn't go back months and months and months on it, but I went back, um, you know, several months to to sort of see what. Whether there had been any discussion with the rest. Of, with the whole board, with the whole select board, um, one of the letters we did send Friday. Board, as well as um, is Dennis, the manager, and like I said, the only one that we've heard from. Was just a very simple statement, you know, we have five days um to respond to this, and that was the extent of it, so. Um, that's where we are with this.
Um, so that'll be the sprigging.
What's that?
That would take us to the twenty sixth, right?
Yeah, well, you have five days to respond to an F O A request, and then you have a reasonable amount of time. So he was just reminding us that he had a full five days.
To tell us that he's in a nondisclosure agreement, so he's not actually gonna do any FOA requests for us, because he's gonna claim nondisclosure, which we're gonna say. It's the whole purpose of the FOA request is to.
To know what you know, I wanna know what you know.
Right, so Holly, you know, I know people are interested, uh, people that are on. Online here, people in the audience I know have already started writing letters. Do you have any advice for us? As a town, uh, anything that we should do, or should we just hold uh off until we learn more, or any thoughts on how to move forward?
I think you should be as proactive as possible, which includes you could be writing to the governor, to the commissioners. Can make all this with the names and.
Not counting.
Stay separate.
Thank you.
We could also watch D E P permitting, and as soon as we see anything get listed there. We can file our intervening status so that we then have to be included in all conversations.
Has there been any, has there been a survey?
There, they were, they're just infancy, if you can be, I think they've just cut the tree, there be, once they go to.
They're cutting to the tree right now.
And that was, um, I asked about that, and that was a logging contract that they had decided about almost a year ago, and that was under our, you know, and that's recorded. And Wiscasset page is part of this whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I mean, unrelated or related, it was just planned a year ago before there was any. That I've sent.
You know, I think what concerns me, whether the thirty one, the year, or anything else, is that I've seen repeatedly. Wiscasset do things. That impact was for our credit, that without ever consolidating, whether it was the whole gasification plant. Or the casino, they were thinking, I mean, it was, but all kinds of things that they started on. We've, we've never been talked to, but I think it's, I really appreciate what you're doing, trying to. Stand atop, but I can't, if I think of anything that might help, I'll tell you, but I really think, I I just, I. Unfortunately, the trust between Wiscasset and Westport is at the lowest level whatsoever behind me.
Yeah, and and we did specifically in our letter say that, you know, we we've wanted, you know, that we're gonna be a butter, that we we, it's gonna hurt us more.
Only a whole residents close to the major.
Yeah, yeah, and so we we did ask to to really be included. And your hand was raised, and your name?
I'm, I'm Brady, thanks, I, um, I started a list of organizations, nonprofits, um, people in the government. That we started writing letters to, uh, be happy to share that with. Everyone, I don't know if it's a public forum, we could do that, one. Um, I also reached out to a woman from Slingshot. Today, who apparently helps people organize. Things like this, um, because we're all kind of novice at that, because we have no idea um what to do. I haven't heard back from her yet, but. A woman from Maine Conservation had passed on her information to me, so. If there's a way that I can share our our list, I'd be happy to do that, kind of adding to it every day as we meet more people and. And I try and send three or four letters every morning.
And not to uh.
You're gonna have to show up later, I did say, the county has no regular.
One of the, we thought, if I was involved in fighting, if I asked fighting, all those things, one of the things we found very useful. Was to contact the press, get out there and contact the press, or the television stations and everything, say you understand. There's a big, I don't know what you know, because they probably haven't read that article, and and suddenly they'll they'll start asking questions.
Yeah.
And they'll start investigating, and they'll find out, they they will find out stuff that we probably find out.
Well, and and Charlotte is on on, and and we'll make sure that.
Charlotte, is she on there?
Yeah, yeah, we've gone every.
Very uninvestigated journalist.
I would suggest that having a citizens initiative parallel to the town's initiative is really important. So, you know, I honor all of you folks that have an interest in, that can get the ball rolling and keep it rolling, but I think that the. You know, there's a lot of times when a select board doesn't get the ear that you as citizens can get, so. I would encourage you to to do that grassroots effort, expand it as much as you can, share all the information we can share, but have both paths going at the same time.
I I also would say I would wait for, you know, for some intelligence, we'll go down a big yard, because I have the perspective of Wiscasset, that like. The citizens' organization, the police coming together. You know, certainly, I as your state representative will support you, um, but you get on there first. And say, these are our concerns, this is what we've heard, this has learned, as citizens, taxpayers, residents of Westport Island. Um, and help the public understand exactly what. Said, which is you're close into it, and was since most of the residents.
Said, which is you're close into it, and since most of the residents of Wascassit. You know, I live on a cross river, which is down the corner of that river, I'm like, I'm probably close to. Just something to think about, use the media as your tool first.
Demi?
I feel like we also need to be sensitive to the residents of Wascassit and their current struggles. A lot of them are paying very. I I I think that we should also be sensitive and approach it like, hey, our view's gonna be growing, our skies are gonna, as Westport Islanders. You know, our property, our property assessments or whatever, our values are gonna go down, people just think. And they're like, hey, we need a break on our taxes, we're we're struggling over here. And then we really need to um, come at it in a neighborly way, because they're essentially gonna be voting for this, you know. It's gonna come to them as a town and we're gonna have to try to speak to them and be like, hey, it's in none of our best interests for this to happen. And but also understand why they might want it to happen because of what their taxes have been like for so long. And the hole that Maine Yankee has left there that they've been wanting to fill for so long. Um, and and just help them see another way. Because I think what they were planning on, the mixed use residential was a great step for them. And I'd hate for all that research and all those funds go to waste, to just have an easier out and have someone swoop in. Say, I'm gonna save you and show the money, show the money and, you know, it not be that way.
Yeah, and I just wanna say, cause I know you're on the Wascassit, um. Unofficial Wascassit Facebook page, just like we have ours. Um, and I encourage you to get on that, um, you're allowed to get on it, I'm I'm on it, I I get on it only. To listen, to to find out what's happening and there's been some good discussion and and I have seen both sides. And, you know, I understand where Wascassit is coming from. But it really hurts when they have totally ignored Westport Island. Um, you know, not not a single word. And that that doesn't feel comfortable at all. Um, but yeah, if if you wanna do some advocacy, one place to do it would be probably going to that website and at least hearing. Some of the things that are going on from there, and I think you just, it's Wascassit Facebook page, isn't it? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're in many ways, and all the peninsulas, we're very connected by the waterways and. You know, we might live here, but our kids go to school in Wascassit, the grocery shop, it's like we're very interconnected. So to come about it that way.
Yeah, we're dependent on a lot of services from that are in Wascassit.
EMS.
Our sheriff, everything, so, yeah, yeah.
As someone that grew up there and it's their hometown, I'll say what you were saying, that Wascassit. Depend, doesn't matter who's in there, they like to look for silver bullets to shoot golden keys. Comes to what's people have for plans there, I believe it when I see it.
Any other thoughts or comments about um, this issue?
I have a question for Jason, um, in terms of like renewables, if someone were to cover three hundred acres in. Solar panels and windows, it's still gonna be enough.
That is close, yeah. You know, again. You know. You you might cover a couple hundred square feet worth of data.
So where would they get the power?
They're gonna get it from the the new line from the.
They're gonna bring it from Quebec.
Yeah, but they're they're not gonna do it, again, twenty two cents a kilowatt hour will fill this.
Not nearly, let's see a V up roll, but ISO nine zero. Have to make sure that they have everything organized so they can meet the region's demands.
It's a major impact in the ground, it's a major.
CMC has already asked to, or said that they are going to up their prices, so and that's before.
That just raises my curiosity about, they knew that before they even came and had a conversation with Wascassit, they knew what the power cost. So somebody in that organization thinks they can get around that.
Or they're playing us off another, you know, Wascassit off the town in Virginia, trying to look for any decisions.
Something motivated them to come here.
What time is the meeting?
Four P M, please come, it's usually pretty desolate, I'm usually yelling my name. There is food.
It might be a great turnout this year.
And then I see all the summer lanes and crosscar.
Everybody here can head out to everybody.
Yeah, September thirtieth.
Just so folks know, if you go to that meeting, I have had tons of conversations with the citizen advisory board that oversees that and people higher up. With the feds at the DOE, as Carrie was mentioning. The Maine Yankee site cannot be developed, there is a very strong decommissioning contract, there is a statewide referendum that would have to happen. If they were gonna do anything with that nuclear waste or trying to reactivate nuclear power there, it would be like. A years-long, decades-long process and very, very hard, so.
Making it very undesirable.
Right, so by all means, go to the meeting and question them, but that's.
Say about safety and long-term storage concerns and sea level rise impacts. Inflected it from every angle.
Yes, and the DOE people who are involved, their only involvement is about removing the waste from Wascassit. They're the people who are supposed to put it at Yucca Mountain or somewhere else. So that's why they're paying attention to this site, but it's not to develop it.
We already paid for that move.
So did everybody else, by the way.
Okay, uh, we're gonna jump up, uh, we won't finish the select board business, cause that's pretty easy to deal with. We'll go back up to um, citizens issues and um, I have a lot of people here, um, yes, Jason. Are you the first citizens issue?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't even get a chance to say anybody have any questions.
Tell us when you want.
Three point seven is now getting into light, but they already had a really nice intersection. We've been having this intersection issues forever and now they're proving point seven even more. Uh, is any results, anything gonna happen? Because we spent several hundred thousand dollars to redo the intersection by norms and by the uh, storage place, which made zero change.
And you've had some.
So I do have information on that, so at the norm site, one forty four and twenty seven, oh, one forty four and route one. We are on the docket for a two thousand and twenty eight light install, if. There's actually money available at the time. But we made it, it passed all the tests for the safety requirements that yes, a light should be installed there. So that end is good, on the other end, the birch point end, because they put in the the left turn lane. That they did last year for a million dollars, that no longer meets any requirements for any lightage.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly, so we'll take the one side. Um, so we did make the list, we're on the list, we're a projected project. But there is that caveat with federal funding particularly coming down. Uh, they don't know for sure that they'll have the money to fund everything that they have on the list, but we are on the list and. We don't really have any way to get any higher on the list than we are right now, so the studies are done, we're there, now we just have to wait.
I would say I went to a DOT meeting about a year ago and at that time, they didn't even know that Tucker Chevrolet was planted on B on the other side of that. They were also shopping a roundabout for that whole area too, which is perfect if the traffic doesn't get back up to that road.
I did talk to them too about anybody that travels to Booth Bay, you know, the. The new, I don't even know what you call it, but you come out of Booth Bay and you can turn left. But Route one forty four doesn't qualify for that because they have to have the left turning lane. And in Booth Bay, they did away with the left turning lane by adding that other little shortcut piece, which.
That works so well.
But now they're getting a light there.
They're making, I guess, that's just what I was gonna say, they're installing the streetlights at the crossroad. That may. With the other lights in town, it's hard to say, that may have an effect on the birch point intersection because. The problem with norms is you need a brake in traffic to pull out and you don't get that.
Right.
There's too much distance between, so roundabout down the street, the streetlight network. Things should be improving and hopefully getting safer.
Did you get, get fireworks to like split their departure time? Everybody gets out of free.
Yeah, they used to do that, we had a drug bridge, it was called the Carlton.
They used to split their shift, so half hours, well, it wasn't such a. Mass exodus all at once. As everybody, that one working yard says, the VRW five hundred. Starts at three thirty.
Start your engines.
Thank God Middle Road isn't in Westport. That's where the action really goes.
All right, so I was happy to hear that too and it was on our agenda to to talk about today, so, you know. We we're on the list and uh, we've done what we can to to get on that list, so.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. Any other citizens issue? Yes, sir, and you are again?
George Johnson.
George Johnson.
Apparently, I've been a seasonal resident since nineteen sixty three. And I need some help with figuring out my property taxes. Everything I read, residents voted in a ten percent budget increase. My property taxes, as well as many others in my neighborhood, went up twenty six percent. So I'm having trouble with the math, budget went up about three hundred thousand bucks. Ten percent, and my bill went up twenty six percent.
Right, and I know you talked to Ashley the other day and.
I did.
I'll explain it as best I can, okay. Twenty three, twenty four year, um, we use surplus to lower the mill rate. Next year, there was a mistaken calculation, so we didn't ask for enough money. At the town meeting, because a a number was entered mistakenly and. So we asked for less than we really needed, rather than send out for um, a second tax bill. We um, use surplus to offset that, so what happens is. In that year, because we didn't ask for enough, the mill rate should have been a little bit higher that year. So we went from, when you use surplus, we back up, when you use surplus, it lowers your mill rate, which is. You know, it's it's sort of a a false uh, way to kind of try to save money. I should preface everything by saying, the biggest driver for for tax increases is is more spending. Obviously, and obviously we did that this year, so the first year, we used surplus to offset, to lower the mill rate. Second year, there was a mistake in the calculation, so the mill rate didn't go up as high as it should have. So as a result, there was a bigger jump this year, which is, it was like fourteen point, I think, eight six percent. From the mill rate of last year, so that was where the other fifteen, sixteen percent comes in, twenty to ten percent, that's. Yeah.
So how much was the shortfall?
Hundred, that was a town meeting, we got permission, one ninety four, I think it was, one ninety four.
So I'm still figuring out the math, so if if the, if the residents voted a ten percent tax increase, which is three hundred thousand. And the shortfall was a hundred and something, that still doesn't get me to twenty six.
No, the short, the shortfall was was the year before. That we didn't ask for enough, so the mill rate last year was seven point five. Seven point four, and it should have been probably closer to eight if we had asked without enough money, that extra hundred and ninety four thousand dollars. So as a result, yes, we did spend more this year at the town meeting, yes, we did. Um, that contributed to the increase, but the mill rate went up that much higher because it was a bigger jump than. It would have been if we had asked for the right amount the previous year.
It it just seems the select board, in looking at the residents on Westport, you know, might have tried to brainstorm a different way. To not get to twenty six, that that is a, as I said, I've been here since nineteen sixty three, say as well.
I hundred percent agree with you, this year is, it's my mission, we're we're not doing that again this year. Last year, part of it is, it's the battle with the state as well, so the state keeps telling us our valuations are here. And we have to try to get to that amount with with, we're limping along, I say this every year. Till we do the revale, cause the revale is is revenue neutral, doesn't make us money, more money. But what it does is it equalizes, so you're paying actually what your house is valued at. First year, we had to factor twenty two percent, which means basically everybody's valuation went up twenty two percent. Not a good way to do things, but we're battling against the state these these last few years to try to get. Closer to the hundred percent, because then we don't get the reimbursements and you guys don't get the offset as much, depending on where it is, seventy percent to to a hundred percent. We try to get to a hundred percent. So that that is the is the battle with the state over the last couple of years, this year, we did ten percent factoring. Um, and and so, again, it's my mission, as you said. To figure out a way, I've already got an email into our assessor agent to say, you know, I know spending, yes, we can, we can control that. But what's gonna happen this year? As we limp along to try to get to a hundred percent until the revale is completed now. They're they're, I don't know exactly when they're gonna be starting, but they're starting sooner than they had originally said, they're they're the assessor agent and his company. Um, their calendar opened up, so they're gonna be able to start doing assessments in the fall. It's still not gonna impact us until twenty seven anyway, because they have to get all their calculations done by April first, which is never gonna happen. So we're still looking at another year of trying to do something. To get to our hundred percent, and I don't know what that's gonna be yet, but I'm tapping into the assessor agent to see if if he can, you know, work with us and and kind of project. What might happen so that this doesn't happen again.
But one other thing I I just wanna add to is that for years and years, we've had really, really low taxes. But we have put absolutely no money aside, or things like the the building that we've known for ten years has been broken and needed serious help. We still don't have money in the budget for that. All we have is money to to get a, um, uh, somebody to to look at it, to give us some plans and whatnot, but but. Things are broken, if you go to the town hall, we didn't break that this year. But we we started to see that there are some serious issues that we we, and we could have said, no, we're not gonna do anything about it. We we can continue to do that, that was a choice that the town made, that's why we had two informational meetings, we had people that were allowed. We invited people to come to look at the buildings to say, look, see what's here. Because most people don't get a chance to go into, example, the the um, the firehouse. But based on the fact that we're finding that things needed to be done. That we needed to present that to the town, so yes, things cost more, but also prices of everything goes up, things for the road. If something had been done ten years ago versus what it's been done now. Um, a huge difference in what the materials and whatnot are 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 costing, so. We brought it to the town, we said, we have a lot of things that are seriously broken and um, and we know it's gonna cost. If if nothing gets fixed, if um, if you don't spend the money for it. And that's um, one of the things that we've been having to deal with, is that we've discovered these things, we we didn't. Know ourselves about the the issue with with the firehouse, it, we only found out when the insurer came. And said, we're not gonna even insure this building anymore unless you do anything. And uh, for ten years, we had had this information, um, that said that you need to do something. And and so, all of that, if if you looked at the warrant articles, you would see a lot of money was going into. Uh, capital reserve accounts, so that we can start to try to fix some of the things that were broken. Um, and and so, we have struggled with this, I know we get blamed, it's like a bunch of women are are just, um, you know, want to raise taxes. My taxes went up, I live on the water, I'm not happy. But their taxes went up, everybody's taxes went up, it is what it is. But we're trying to save the town, we're trying to save the town buildings, we have no other place to meet other than that town hall. And it is so broken, every time they go in there, they discover something else is wrong with it, now the under, the the um. The joist or whatever underneath is still, are are rotten. And and so, it it's like, we can't, the the water now is, there's no water there that, you know, it it's, so somebody says, oh, just. Yeah, just just go ahead and build it.
We said, why didn't we come up with a solution this year for this twenty six percent jump? One of the options was to ignore the buildings, which we can't really do that anymore, the other option is to dig back into that surplus pot. And that would have just. And that would have just kicked the can down the road, right? So we could have done that. We could have gone in and said, well, let's pull three hundred thousand out of surplus to cover the ten percent increase. But that doesn't help a thing and that's not really being honest in what the town needs to spend to maintain a town. So like, I'm sorry, but it is a huge wake up call that. Everything this town does, everything this town wants it to be, costs money. And the townspeople, as few as we are, that's where it comes from. So we didn't feel like digging into the surplus again. For the third year in a row was the right thing either, because it's just, it's just, it's faking it. You know, we can't fake it forever here. We have to. Just settle down and say, okay, what do we want? What don't we want and move forward? So I apologize for the shock. Hopefully, it it'll all even out in the end and we'll we'll have a.
I hear you. I hear everybody. I I I I struggle with this as as, you know, for me, because I don't like to hurt people. Um, we're aware, but one of the things I wanted to say is we're we are always actively looking for grants to help pay for things. Um, he promised that we had installed in this building were a were a grant. Um, so. Kim's been looking into uh grants to help fix the town hall. We have a meeting on October sixteenth here with a representative from Susan Collins office. To look into um um discretionary funding, um, help us pay for the firehouse. So we're we're always looking to to find money to kind of help us do these things. We're not gonna sit here and just like. Expect you guys to pay for everything if we can help it and we can get help with grants. So. I just wanna throw that in there.
Yep. I don't know whose hand up was first, so um I'll start with Mario then Demi then.
What's the relationship between the assessment on the reimbursement?
What? Uh, so if we don't meet the, if we don't meet the a hundred percent assessment with the state. They take away the funding which covers our homestead exemptions and our veterans.
Must be a formula. Is it ten percent? Is it five percent? What is it?
We're allowed seventy percent of of what the state says our value should be, as low as seventy percent.
The assessment is one thing. What's the reimbursement? How to figure out reimbursement and how much is it? In dollars towards the town?
Oh, so uh homestead reimbursement was four million six hundred fifty two dollars. It's seventy, it's like seventy six percent of what we've of what we have originally. Our original number was total exempted value is six million hundred twenty one. So seventy six percent is is four million six hundred fifty ten. So it's. It's a sizable.
Okay. Let's add one more.
Oh, okay.
Like you talking about the firehouse, I understand you've got the inherited a million dollars from.
Eight hundred sixty six thousand, which is in our, it which is in our, I I know there was something on Facebook about what happened at money. That money is in. Um, capital reserve account right now. It's sitting there uh earning interest while we figure out what to do. Six hundred, eight hundred sixty six dollars is not gonna fix. The problem that's there, uh right, Stacy? Um, it 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 will put a dent into it, but it will not fix it. And that's why we're looking for extra money.
You should be at the firehouse. I understand Monaco fires disgusted fire development was their third.
You wanna talk about your taxes coming?
Yeah. Couple of years ago, we actually approached with Cassidy as an option to say, hey, would you, you know, cover us? And the first response was a laugh. And they said, you know, we can't even begin to cover you for what pay now. Uh, and they're having a tough time covering their own. And by and large, we also provide a lot of services that was Cassidy does not. Just because we've only had two fires.
I'm just bringing this thing up. Don't tell me that. The one thing is. We spend a lot of money training volunteers. All these volunteers, they don't, they're not on the island if the fire happens. Does that make sense?
Sometimes we are, sometimes we're not, yeah, because most of us unfortunately do work.
No, I know, you know, so.
Yeah, the volunteers get paid a very small payment for what they do and they don't just respond to fires. They respond to their first responders. So when somebody falls or when somebody's injured, they're the first one to do that. They do cat mist lacticists. They pump out basements. When they're flooded, they do more than just fires. And trust me, I know as a wife who hears that thing constantly beating. And my husband is gonna go to a fraction of what my father and Stacy do. And what the fire department does for very little and they do all the training, which takes a lot of time.
Under a lot of money.
A lot of time from the residents who donate their time. Um, it is not necessarily like a lot of things that our town does is based off of volunteer labor. And I heavily suggest that if anybody wants to peek into what they do, you're welcome to join the fire department and help.
Everyone's tonight.
So I so I have two others before you, Susan. I I see you back there. Um, Demi, you had a question?
Yes, I had. So I wasn't able to attend this year's town meeting, which I usually do. Um, because we have a wedding, but usually I I have to pay for childcare, which is one of my issues with the town meeting. But I see that the 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 portions have jumped. It it has gone from. You know, a small under thirty percent to now fifty two percent is municipal. And for that, for everybody in the room, our taxes are pretty much divided into three chunks, right? We have what we have to pay for the county, what we have to pay for our school district, and then we have discretionary pay. When I was reading the minutes to catch myself up on this year and I did go to informational meetings, which a lot of people don't go to, because they just don't know. Um, or they don't have the time. And it's a lot of people at the the informational meetings that go to the town meeting. So it's really like. We're just talking to each other over there. Um, when I read the meeting minute, there was two questions that Gary had asked. When Gary, who's in the room, um, that I believe went on answered and the first one in the me- meeting minutes were. Um, you know, he stood up and said, before the meeting even started, for anybody even voted. You know, I did my own calculations. Our taxes are going up this year if everything we vote on today goes through. By, I think he said maybe like thirty or twenty percent or something. Um, according to your calculations, what will our taxes be if everything goes through? And the answer was, I don't know. And I think that in the future. There should be, and I, you know, this might set you up for more trouble, who knows, or getting yelled at more. But there should be some kind of estimate of how that would affect a household. Because then people would be making an educated decision on, okay, yes, we all want to take care of our town buildings. But can I actually afford that this year? The at the cost of everything is going up and that means people on our island are also struggling. And we are one of those islands where we have beautiful waterfront properties, but we also have a lot of working class renters. And we need to make those decisions, but both in mind. Not everybody, maybe six hundred dollars. Extra this year is no no problem for someone, but for someone on a fixed income. It it's heartbreaking. And when that tax bill comes due, which is larger than usual, they have one month to pay it or one month and change. And you know, I have family members who live in higher tax areas and they're broken up into quarters, so they're a little bit more palpable. But as we are going up and up, is that something to consider and break it up quarterly? My other um follow up to that was Gary's second question. This year, when I was reviewing the minutes and reviewing the warrants, compensation was a one giant line item. And I referred to compensation back in twenty one was eighty five thousand dollars. This year compensation was two hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. So the explanation for that jump. And what we're used to in our taxes needs to be itemized again. It needs to be explained. I don't think it should just be one lump sum. And then and that's when Gary asked about how much is our town paying for health insurance for three employees who work less than thirty hours? And that was not answered.
That was, it was broken down in 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 an attachment at the end of 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 the the warrant. Where we had the uh breakdown of how those monies were spent. Um, to answer one of your other questions. Um, and I'll let you address the the commitment and when we can say things, but we have already talked about. Um, having uh taxes paid um at least twice a year. We brought this up last year and people were totally opposed to it. Um, we can't do that without having the town approve that. So we'd have to go to a town meeting to say that we would accept um, you know, quarterly or or whatever else. That that would be a town decision and. Um, so Ashley can't make that decision on her own. Um, so um, do you wanna address the commitment issue and when we can?
Well, I think I think what when Ashley said we don't know is because at that point we didn't know what the, I mean, we could have probably done. You're right. I agree with you. I agree with everything you said. Um, and we could do better. And like I said, this year, it will be better. I I'm I'm.
May I ask Eric, how did you, how did you come up with that calculation on your own?
Well, I think uh I think what Ashley was saying was because they hadn't, they hadn't finalized the. Valuation of the additional ten percent, they weren't sure what they, how how to calculate the mill rate. My follow up was if valuation stays the same, and that's the way I did my challenge.
Hmm, assuming it stayed the same. Yeah, one of our challenges is in in um. You know, it's damned if you do and damned if you don't. Um, but um, in the past, we have sometimes just said. It might be this amount and then that's what gets heard and that's what everybody then takes home and that's the gospel then. And we we purposely didn't give a number. We try to tell people that we know taxes are gonna go up. We don't know how much. But because we felt like if we gave a number and then that wasn't the right number, that that almost is, you know, you're lying to us or whatever. So. We purposely said, we're not gonna give you a number until we really know what that number is. So it it's, you know, either. So and if we had given you a number based on, based, everything staying the same, it would have been lower and then you would have said, oh, you know, so either way. Um, we're sitting here taking it. And um and we understand because we're in the same exact thought that you are.
I understand that, but there is large budgets that were newly made for each building. And again, I was a proponent. Of this work being done, but after seeing the, how many people who's are really rocked by these increases. Um, I mean, can I put six hundred dollars, okay, and an increase from last year and. We're working people, we can work or we can, you know, but to other people that would be devastating. I'm just trying to understand for the future. There's nothing we we can do about what's already voted in. But is there an estimate that can be made so that people are making an educated um decision? If that can happen, if you're like damned if you do, damned if you don't, understand. But there has to be some general understanding when these new budgets are being made. There's fifty grand that was allocated per town building. And that's for everybody who doesn't know, it's this building, it's the Old Town Hall and it's the fire station. Um, in addition to the thirty grand that Old Town Hall was re-upped. So now the Old Town Hall has seventy thousand dollars going towards improvements of it. Is that it? Are we gonna be paying fifty grand every year?
Hopefully not. But again, what we're looking at, the Old Town Hall, I think, is a controllable fixed piece. Because there are grants available and we've got two coming up that we're working on right now. One is up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So keep your fingers crossed. That we're successful in getting those grants. The Old Town Hall, if we don't get grants, you know, it's a building where we can gradually continue to do some work. Right now, where we need to do the structural stuff, because if not, yeah, I'm not gonna tell you it's gonna fall down tomorrow, but. Yeah, it may. Uh, so that one's a controllable one. The fire station? I can't tell you what that's gonna turn out to be. My hope is that we come up with a plan for that where maybe we can. Salvage some of the building that's there and do an addition that maybe can get funded with some federal grant monies. Um, but I don't know. I don't have the answer for the fire station. I think that's a little bit more of a long term, big investment. So. If it turns out that we get no funding from anybody and we wanna have a fire station, we're gonna have to. Get a loan and pay it off over thirty years or whatever it is that that other towns have had to do. But so. I hope is that the 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 buildings thing was a one shot deal, that we can. Get things taken care of this year. We've got a lot of work already done. The fact that the history. Uh, Friends of Westport Island history is taking over the Wright Landing House. Um, that saved us a huge amount of money. Because that was a building that if we didn't get them to take it, that was just gonna be a big money pit. This year that the town was gonna do. Now they're gonna take that over. So if they were in good shape for next year, I don't think you're gonna see us asking for. A lot of money for buildings next year, other than sorry station, whatever we end up doing with the fire station.
And then the question that Gary asked that kind of went on answered on the minutes was, you know, the compensation.
That shouldn't go up. Did you say, I was just looking at the budget sheet. It went from. Three hundred and forty six, four ninety seven in fiscal year twenty four. To two thirty seven. Wait, sorry. No, sorry, wrong line. Two thirty, two hundred and thirty three thousand. I'm rounding here just to make it simpler. Two hundred and thirty three thousand to two hundred and forty thousand to two hundred and forty four thousand.
I'm saying twenty from year twenty twenty one compensation. Right, right. So I'm asking how much was health insurance this year?
A hundred thousand.
And that was just a lump sum hundred thousand. It hasn't changed since we voted it in.
Right.
Okay.
Correct. And that's just because we can't anticipate how much it's gonna go up every year, but but that covers anything that's left over goes back into surplus. Just not like we spend a hundred thousand. It's like our cushion, like if if you're, you know, doing budgeting and you budget this amount and anything extra, then you.
And how much do we about spend every year and how much goes to surplus?
It's like, I think eighty something.
It was in the eighties.
We'd have to ask Ashley to know for sure, but that is all detailed. So all those details that have been in former warrants were attached in the warrant and then attached.
I clicked the link. I followed the minutes and it didn't take me to any table that.
The attachments might not be on the online version and that's on me because it's a separate document. So when I attached it to the website, I probably forgot. To merge those PDFs. At the town meeting, they're given out to everybody with the warrant and. So I'll make that available to you and that's just my oversight. But there's a very specific reason that we did that, which is because, if you recall. Um, when Julie resigned and we needed a training budget, there was zero flexibility. If you put it in the warrant like that as a table with all the details right there. The slideboard has no flexibility during the year. If somebody quits, if a position changes, if anything happens. So they intend to do what's in that attachment, but they wanted to be able to have flexibility so they don't have to call especially town meeting if there's. An unexpected change of personnel during the year. So when you vote, the future will always appear as a lump sum or another.
But but you'll have the details because we do believe in transparency. There'll be details there. Um, we did that for several of the items where we had um. Yeah, and we'll make sure you get a copy. I think next was Dave and then I haven't forgotten a bunch of citizens.
My name's Dave Bertrand. I live on Federal, you know, Federal. I worked for thirty one years. And over the thirty one years, my taxes went up and they went down, but I never complained about them. And I was never surprised by the thirty percent increase that I had this year. So if you don't wanna ask the first question, I don't really got an answer. I I'd like to ask some questions differently. What was the income revenue from taxes in twenty twenty four? How much? You don't know what you collected last year?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
I'd like to know.
That that would be an Ashley question.
Okay, if you could.
You could easily answer that.
I'd like to know what the income, what you collected in twenty twenty four. And how much you're collecting this year?
You're talking revenue?
Yes, both revenue items. I'd like to know what you're collecting to see if that went up by thirty percent. If it didn't go up by thirty percent, you've done something else and I don't know what that is.
Have you already talked to Ashley about this? I know you were in the.
Yes, I talked to her.
And and did she give you?
First me to the circle, I get refers to the. You read me what I get referred to that group. I used to be able to talk to the assessment committee, but now you gotta talk. You gotta call like a company.
RCS.
She called the company. Absolutely. I haven't got an answer yet, but I'd like to, if you could give me an answer to that, it's very important. You could give me an answer. How much you collected last year?
Okay.
And what you collected this year?
Okay. This year, do you mean, do you mean?
One of the last taxes, I I paid about twenty thousand last year and this year I'm gonna pay twenty seven thousand. And I'd like to know. How much, how much you collected, whether it went up by the same percent that my taxes went up by. I thought. It was not only the amount that they went by, I'm retired. Uh, and. Uh, I've never been surprised like this in my life. I've looked all over the place and I've never. Uh, and, uh, I've never been surprised like this in my life. I've looked all over the place and I've never had a thirty-five percent. It's not thirty-five percent, it's about thirty percent increase in my taxes. And it's a surprise. It hurts as much as anything because you can't plan for it. And like this lady says, I know people that are low income money. I only have friends. They got surprised too. They all got surprised. And and their increases were more than ten percent. So I, there's something else that's happened and I don't know what that is, but I'm going to figure it out. Uh, second question is, we used to have an assessment committee that you could talk to and they knew what was going on. Why did we switch from the committee that we used to have to calling people on the phone who work for us?
That that changed many, many years ago.
I know. I've been involved for ten years. My wife had Alzheimer's and I can't go to meetings, okay?
Yep.
I used to be very active on committees and involved with all sorts of things.
I remember you. Yeah.
So why did that change? Well, it it didn't change that many years ago because last year it said, contact the assessment committee. And this year it says, contact the company on my tax bills.
The, 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 we are the, the board of assessors and there's always somebody on the board who is the chair of the board of assessors.
We don't call you anymore. We call the company. So the tax bill said.
Well, in the past, it would have been Evan.
Right.
They've always had an assessor's agent.
I know we've had that. I know you, I've known the old successor here, but I never called him. I used to talk. I don't, and my tax bill used to say, call you guys. It doesn't say that anymore. It says, it says, um.
So honestly, if you called us, Dave, to ask us about your taxes, we're going to call RCS, our assessing agent. So you don't really need to put us in the middle between you and them.
No, but it's.
Because you want your information to be straight. You shouldn't call them.
I'm not, on the bill, the tax bill, it tells me to call them.
Yeah.
Okay.
You should.
Yeah, I used to call the assessment committee and they knew enough about what was going on to be able to tell me. I didn't, they didn't have to call the assessor. They would tell me what changed. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
The third thing is, um, when was the last town audit?
This year.
We have one every year.
Yes. Were there any control or recommendation, any issues of controls?
No.
You were had a clean audit.
Yeah.
Could I get a copy of that?
Um, we have books on it, so.
It's in the, in the town report for last.
Yeah, yes.
It's in that report. I didn't get a copy last year. Okay.
Dave, the new one's very nice.
He, his other question.
I didn't, because I haven't been involved and I'm not trying, I'm just trying to understand how things work now compared to where they were at work ten years ago. My, my final question is this. You'll give me the numbers on the differences. My final question is this. Back about twelve years ago, and you'll remember this, your father established a finance committee to go through expenses and try to avoid the kind of issues that you guys had this year. You got a lot on your shoulders. And we had some very, very bright financial people on the island here involved in it. And they would go through and things like the, like the fire hall or whatever, uh, some, they would figure out whether it was smart to take a loan and amortize it. Whether it was so that you didn't have happen what happened this year. Do we have a finance committee?
We don't right now.
Have we considered getting some of these extremely good people we got from away who live here in Alamo Run institutions as big as Exxon? To participate and and develop finance committee that could meet and help you folks put together rational spending plans or recommend to us.
We have talked about it before. We have.
I, I recommend you do it, especially, sometimes it's not important. But in times when you have inflation like we have now and you're faced with major decisions on the firehouse, on the town hall, major expenditures and these people, I, I know you're all very smart people. But these people can help think of ways of doing things that you met. The idea of getting grants and things, we've always done that. I, I commend you for doing it. We can, they can help do that too, write grants. I really wrote grant, grant money. We did the first comprehensive plan. We got it all paid for. That's good. But I'm just saying, look at the total finances to review whatever comes out of these assessors when they do the reassessment. And help make decisions that are not going to hurt residents of Westport regardless of where they live. I think we should do that. I think that, I think you should look around, get some of the people who are knowledgeable to, to help you with that. I don't agree with that.
Yeah, on the budget committee history.
I agree.
April's going to answer your question and I want to go to Susan because I.
No, I've been looking into committee history a little bit because I'm putting the minutes together. Budget committees are special and I don't remember all the rules around them, but they're created by a town meeting vote. They're not just, the select board creates most of our committees to help them do their thing.
Okay.
But budget committees are voted in and our budget committee met for a few years and then they couldn't get people to run. And then I believe it was dissolved at a town meeting.
I understand. And it, and it was created, I know why it was created. I remember why it was created. And it did a lot of good. I got to the point where we did, we, things is that we really didn't need it anymore and we didn't have the expenditures or whatever. Uh, I, I think it's time for one myself and I think that the town, if you could have some kind of a special vote on it. I think going into next year with all the problems you're facing, I think that the more people letting you know, involved and looking at it and, uh, and helping you with it, I think the better decisions and recommendations will make the taxpayers.
No, certainly to consider it. I want to go to Susan who's been very patient.
Thank you for listening.
Yeah.
So, so this is, um, more of a curiosity. So.
April.
Uh, and Lisa, you, you sent.
May I mention that we're trying to get, we do a hundred percent of assessment. That's the goal. And I'm wondering why when the state, um, will still give us the homestead reimbursement if we're at seventy percent.
It's a, I, I, the number that I told you before, it's a big number. So it's, it's four million dollars that we get.
Um, right, right. But the, the, don't we get, we don't, so we.
So you, we get whatever the percentage is that we, we settle at. We're allowed to go as low as seventy. Whatever percentage we settle at, that's the percentage of, of, of what we, um.
So if you, so if you assess our properties higher, we get, uh, so the higher you assess our properties, the more exemption we get. The more homestead exemption money we get?
No, no, you, you're, you get, if you do homestead exemption, you get twenty-five thousand dollars off of your, your value.
Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm kind of lost because you, you said that the goal is for us to have our property assessed at a hundred percent. The state will give us the homestead exam assumption if we're at seventy percent. So why the, why do?
Because either way, it'll come out of, it's, it's, you know, come, it'll, it'll affect your, your number, your bottom line. You'll get less off of your valuation. So then you're, you're going to pay more.
If you're at a hundred percent, you'll get a hundred percent of it. If you're seventy percent, you'll get seven percent of it.
Of the twenty-five percent?
Uh, of the twenty-five thousand, for example. That's just for one example. Yeah.
So how are they giving us twenty-five thousand an hour if we're only, if we're not at a hundred percent?
We are at a hundred percent.
Oh, we are.
Oh, right. Which is why you're getting the twenty-five thousand.
We did ten percent factoring.
Yeah.
Okay.
We were so low. And if you go too low, then you get nothing.
Okay.
But but yeah, it's to try to keep everybody to, to, to get all that, the, the reimbursement from the state. And the higher we are, the more percent we get.
And we've been battling this and the state looks at values two years ago. They're working with two years ago, not even current values. So this is kind of like the, as I explained, the battle we've been dealing with until we get the rebound and everybody is where what they is, you know, uh, everybody will be what they're supposed to be. And then we will be battling with the state to try to do this catch-up thing every year.
Right. And if people, I, I just had one other question. If folks don't think that their taxes are where they should be, everybody has, as a citizen, has the right to appeal.
Exactly.
Abatement. So.
Yep, yep. And and actually, Ashley, when you go in and talk to her and we encouraged you to talk to her one-on-one so you can talk about your private issue. But, um, she will say that. And if you want to apply for abatement, you are free to do that.
Okay.
Um, that is totally, um, totally up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions related to that? Okay, any other citizens' issues? Okay, it's kind of quiet back there. All right. Uh, we're going to keep moving along then and we're going to go to roads.
Where's our Jimmy?
Jimmy.
I update on the road.
Nothing really update over the, the project on West Shore Road's office. The drainage engine's done, but it's, we haven't added gravel yet because we need some rain.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Because it's so hard that if you put fabric and gravel down, it's just going to be all bapples. So. April's going to have you approve a contract and I hope we, we're saying.
I think so.
Yeah, thinking it's, we've already done that.
My second time to. Just want to make sure it's, all is worth.
Yeah, it is. And I sent it out to the contractors. You're probably going to want to nudge them. Uh, Amy Gillis said they're not going to bid. Yeah.
All right, uh, committee reports. Anything on committees? Do you have any updates on yours? Nope. All right. We're going to go to select board business and, um, there's a, a, uh, our town committee policy. We are looking to, um, we've got a slight change in that and that's mostly because, um, we want to put together an ad hoc, uh, fire station committee. Want to touch on that a little bit?
Yep. So as everybody already knows, the fire station has become a big issue for us. And, um, we need to move forward with doing something with it fairly soon. Rather than have a lot of input from hundreds of people, we want to create a committee that includes Stacy, uh, representing the fire department, myself, representing the select board and townspeople. Uh, Dave's suggestion about a finance person, that is something that we wanted to put of somebody that's a brilliant financial person on the committee. Um, and then other citizens as, as we kind of like pick and choose so that we have a fairly well-rounded committee to guide us forwards with, okay, what are our needs? What are the possibilities? All right, that's, we need to form a committee to do that. So that's what this was all about.
So the, the, uh, change in the committee policy adds that, um, as an ad hoc committee. And that's all I think that was there. So, um, I'd like to make a motion that we, um.
And ad hoc means it'll be fairly short term. So it's not like a lifelong commitment. If you're on the committee, hopefully within a year. Maybe eighteen months, until we figure out.
Yeah, what, what is it going to look like? Yeah. So I'd like to make a move that we, um, accept the, um, amended town policy committee to establish an ad hoc fire station committee. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Okay.
For that. Um. Oh, speaking of, uh, we, since we have now a committee, we can now appoint people. And so I'd like to make a motion that we appoint, um, both Stacy Hutchinson and, uh, Kim Lynch to this ad hoc fire station committee. And I'll just do both at the same time. Can I have a, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we accept both of those on the ad hoc. Go second then. Is Stacy still here?
Yes.
Yeah. You're hidden back there. Are you okay to be on that committee? I thought so. We sort of assumed it, but I better not to make assumptions. All right. Um, so do I have a second? I think I got one. And all, all in favor?
I can't sign maybe.
Is there an ad hoc committee for each building?
No, no. But if you want to be on, you know, and just focus on one, that would be fine. You know, there are people that just focus on certain areas. Like we have people who just focus on the gardens.
Isn't that the facilities committee?
So, yeah, so it's all one big committee.
Right.
And that way we've got the specialists, people that are really only interested in a building or.
I would love the town hall and as a history major and then.
Get them, get them on the property scheme. Yeah. Can I nominate her right now?
Yeah, it's all called property management, which is why the horticulture company, company, company committee is sort of under that now. All right, uh, next thing we need to amend is a fee schedule policy. And April, would you like to tell us why we're amending that?
Yes, because we just passed it at your last select board meeting and I realized it didn't match a couple of other policies that we have. So I had to make some minor updates so that we have more details in there about the town hall rental and a couple of other things. I don't remember myself, honestly. Looking through committees and was like, oh, we didn't include those details. Um, community room reservation, um, we recently decided that that is for public, not-for-profit events. We lowered the table and the chair rental, the five dollars a chair instead of ten dollars a chair, so it's expensive. Um, we have different rates for residents of Westport Island based nonprofits as opposed to non-residents um, and businesses for rental of the town hall. So I added all those details and just to correct that policy that we passed two weeks ago.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept this amended fee schedule policy. Do I have any? All in favor? Yeah. So this really puts everything on one page so that people know. And it will be public, so everybody knows if, if I want to borrow this or rent this or whatever, uh, this is what I, um, what it's going to cost. Um, and what I love about the policies is that it's the same for everybody. We all get, you know what you got and it's, it's right there. And we're following the policy. Um. One of, I'm going to go to this first because I think it's easier is, um, we, we had a special town meeting on Wednesday. We thanked all of you who showed up there and it was a nice turnout. Um, and we have the, uh, minutes, uh, very detailed minutes, thanks to April there. And I'd like to move that we accept this, um, the town meeting record for our special town meeting on September seventeenth. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? And next on our list is, um, and it, this won't be a decision probably that we make tonight, but I'd like to bring it up that we've had a request from, um, the Friends of Westport Island History. They're, uh, looking to use the ferry landing, uh, it's not to use a ferry landing, they're looking to use the, um, the Wright House as their location, or actually it is a ferry landing to use as their location for, um, this next year's, um, you know, a big event that they have every July.
On raising Dallas.
Yeah. And you have anything to say about that?
Yeah, we, we'd like to use the, the ferry landing at, actually the whole, the whole property. Because we need the parking as well as the grounds.
Right.
Uh, the idea is we'd like to be able to showcase the history center, particularly because by next July, we hope to have it revamped and improved. We hope to have the community room there. People could come in and see what's available to use for the public. Um, so that's one reason why I like to do it there. Um, but, uh, it's a, it's a public facility. We, we, we're getting permission then. Basically said, we, we're going to take it over, uh, for that after this, that's something I think.
Right. And I talked to Gay the other day and the first thought was, you know, like when we do something like with, um, WCA, we always make sure to, you know, certain ties so that we're not, you know.
Someone check its low tide, I mean, it's high tide.
Right. We, we already talked about that because on Sundays is when you plan to have it. On Sundays, you don't have flaming and, and worms. But you do have, it's going to be July and everybody in their bottoms to go and launch their boat. So I think it's some research that we have to do to find out since it's a public, uh, public site.
Yeah.
Um, can we legally shut it down for a couple of hours with advance notice and everything else? Um, and I think that's something we have to do some research on, but I wanted to at least bring it up that we're, we have been asked about this. Um, have you done all the research already?
I started to like two years ago and it was a nightmare and then I just backburnered it and was like, oh, I don't want us. But.
I, I think the answer is going to be that legally we can't. But a roadblock can't.
Uh huh.
Um, but I also think that we can work to make it minimal impact. And I think if we notice, notify, people know, I mean, it's kind of just like, all right, is the one random person going to show up to use this boat launch on that day in that two-hour piece? I think we can minimize the impact. I don't think legally we can just totally shut it off and rent it out or give it away or, you know, not, I don't, you think?
On the other hand, I was thinking about it today too, and there are times that we have to close things down, like a road we have to close down or something else because they're doing something on it. So I think this is going to take some more conversations and what would be. Yeah, which is why you have.
I think we agree, we're for it. We, we want it to happen for you. We just don't know tonight that, that then.
Yeah.
It's actually under our control, but.
Yeah, so we will do the research. We are aware of the request and just want to acknowledge that.
I can't wait to see it.
Yeah. All right, um, any announcements or anything else? Um, all right, I'd like to make, um, a motion that we adjourn for the evening. Do I have a second? Um, all right, I'd like to make, um, a motion that we adjourn for the evening. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?